Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Fugel and I'd like to welcome everyone here for our city council work session this February the 4th, 2020. And we appreciate those who have come to our meeting today. And we're short a few council members, they should be showing up shortly here. So we'll, we have a lot to discuss this evening, so we'll go ahead and get started with our first item and introduction of one of our, I think we just have one new employee, is that right? So Tina, would you?
Mayor and Council, we wanted to introduce our new prosecutor, this is Josh Bishop. He has worked here for three whole weeks, three weeks. Comes to us from Saratoga Springs, he prosecuted for Saratoga Springs. He also did a judicial clerkship with the 4th District Court prior to that. We're excited to have him, he's awesome. I've already gotten a lot of positive feedback on having him here. And so we just want to make sure that everybody knows who he is and introduce him to you. Any questions for Josh?
Josh, welcome. To get positive feedback as a prosecutor is a tough job, so congratulations so far.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
So I grew up in Orem, so I'm fairly close by. And I have a, I went to BYU for both my undergraduate and graduate degree. I got a JD MPA there. And so I'll be helping Tina out with both criminal and civil matters. And I like to have that variety in the work I do. And I'm excited to be here and to be able to help the city Pleasant Grove and represent the city in the criminal aspect and then also in other ways as well. I felt a little bit like a defendant with Tina up here, actually. But yeah, so I'm excited to be here.
I was actually worried, you were sitting down there and I thought, man, are we being prosecuted or what's the? Well Josh, Josh, right?
That's correct.
Josh, what's your last name?
Bishop.
Okay, Josh, well, welcome and if we can be of any help, let us know, but glad you're here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, you have to clarify, he grew up in Orem, but he's a Bruin, not a Golden Tiger.
That's correct.
Or whatever Timbuktu is, but I mean, Tempanogus is, but anyway, so just want to make sure that's straight. We have three of the employees that are, we're getting overloaded on that side, so anyway. And Josh, I just hope I don't have to stand with you in front of the judge in the future, so hopefully that won't happen.
Well, you can stand with me anytime.
Okay. But okay, so anyway, thank you for, and we appreciate Saratoga Springs for giving you up too.
Oh, I will. Yeah. If I may be excused, I need to meet with a victim advocate, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now move on to item two, our discussion on Central Dispatch. We'll turn over to our city administrator, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let me give you a little history, maybe how we're ending up where we are today with this discussion. Stems from about three months ago, we were having difficulties staffing our dispatch center. We had a couple of part timers that left employment with us and we were finding that we were struggling to have enough dispatchers to cover the shifts. We have had position openings and have struggled to recruit people. And this is a little bit of a function of dispatching, but it's probably more of a reflection of today's economy where our part-time jobs are, I mean, our job employment rate is very low and there's a lot of opportunity for people. So because of that, we started looking at what we needed to do to enhance our dispatch services, whether that was having, creating another full-time position so that we can solidify. Having full timers really hasn't been our issue, it's been more attracting part timers. And so we thought, well, maybe we'll have a part timer go to full time, that will help out with that, let's put those costs together, let's consider that. And then we also said, well, let's talk about the service and should we, what I would call fully fund the service, and that is to create a full-time dispatch, which would require instead of one more full timer, which would be four more full timers. Springville is about a similar sized city to us, they have eight full-time dispatchers. And so they've gone with that model. And it's, it costs more money, but that is something that they've made that choice to do and it works for them. In the meantime, as we were looking at these numbers, we took a look at what other cities were paying for their dispatch services, particularly those that were part of the special service district of what we call now Central Dispatch, to see what they paid for the service. And as we talked to a couple of cities and got those numbers, at that point, that's when my eyes kind of opened to this idea that this service we're providing, there's options and potential cost savings to that. Now, I just, I want to address the human side of this, just so we know upfront that as we discuss this, we are discussing about individuals who are going to be impacted by this decision. We have five full-time people in our dispatch department and we have, I think, over 10 part timers that will take shifts for us in this realm. So as we go through the decision-making and the discussion on this, I just want us to keep that in mind, that this is affecting the lives of people. And as we talk about potential options and solutions, we're going to try to address those and maybe mitigate those the best we can. But there's not a solution here that all of a sudden everybody's going to say that gets Pleasant Grove City where it needs to go and gets all these individuals where they need to go. But we'll have that discussion and what that means. I also just want to make sure that it's clear that as we've been looking at this, this was not driven by the service provided by our dispatchers. They have done us a good job. This has been a financial, this has been driven by finance, not by the service being provided. So I don't want this to be a reflection that if we choose to do something different than what we're doing, that somehow our dispatchers were not performing. That is not the case. They have been performing, they've been, some have been pulling double shifts, extra shifts to make sure that we can continue to provide the service. So I don't want that to be a reflection on the quality of what they can do. So as we started heading down this road, we had an engagement with Central Dispatch and I want to introduce to you the three representatives here. Mike Veenendal, in the blue shirt here, he's their executive director. Noreen Stone is operations manager, that's your title, for Central. And then Seth Atkinson is the city administrator, Nefi, and he's the chairman of the board. And that rotates depending on whatever city is, and how many entities are part of Central? Twenty-one entities that are part of this district. So this service district's been set up in order for a city to join the district, it's by inter-local agreement, meaning that we are entering into a partnership with all these other cities to say, this is a service that's being provided and we want to be a part of that. So Mike is their executive directors, my counterpart, he answers to a board. Seth is the equivalent of the mayor of the board. And so as the discussions have been ongoing, most of the discussions have been me and Tina and the chiefs, and probably more so Mike and Brett. Dave's been involved somewhat, but a lot of the focus has been on the police side of it. And meeting with Mike and Noreen and their technical staff. And then we have had opportunity to present to their board and talk to their board about potential options for Pleasant Grove City. So in essence, what they've sent us is what they would call a letter of intent. And that's what this document that on top of it says, February 4th, 2020. So that's today. We received this earlier in the day. However, this has been a discussion point for the last 10 days or so, two weeks. We've been working through the finer points of this and we're going to go through this document in just a minute. But this document, this note, this letter of intent is with an understanding that this is administratively, I mean, he has talked with his chair and his vice chair of the board, but the full board has not signed off on this. They're getting everything set so that their board can do it, just like we're presenting to you, so our board can say, okay, this is something that we potentially want to do. So that's where we're at. We are in really the discussion stage, leading to making sure the numbers are all in front of you, so that we can get to a point that if the council wants to pursue this, that you can give direction, that we can start entering into what I'd call the contract stage. I mean, it's inter-local agreement, but there would, in essence, we would have the finer points and solidify the numbers that have been discussed and put those into play and move that direction, set a date in which we would actually do that transfer. So we'll talk about that as we get a little bit further through this discussion. So I created what I call the dispatch FAQ, things that have come up over time as we've been having these discussions. And I want to just go over each one of these, because I think these are questions that the council has, these are questions that the general public might have, or our employees might have, as we consider these things. So question number one is why would the city consider doing this? And the first paragraph I have there is, in essence, what I've said is, please, this is not a reflection on the ability of our dispatchers. Because the second line is the biggest reason to make this switch for the city would be for the financial considerations. And so I've referenced this other sheet that says dispatch options on top of it. And these are the three options that we have been contemplating and discussing administratively for the last two months as we've worked through this. Option number one is to keep the service. I kind of titled it the Band-Aid approach, because it is something that could help us maybe in the short term, but I don't think it's necessarily a long-term solution if we're going to continue to provide this service. I would just say, and I already said this, the function of the economy is probably the biggest pressure point we're feeling right now. And that is just the ability to be able to bring people to the city. So we did some analysis on what we were paying our full timers and our part timers. We saw that we were behind to the tune of $2 to $3 an hour as to what other agencies were paying in Utah County. So if we were to keep the service, we would need to commit to get those salaries up. So we, just those current employees that we have would need to, would be looking at $2 to $3 an hour raises. If we were to switch one part timer to full time, there is additional cost that comes with that. It saves us a little bit on overtime, saves us on a couple of things, but now this is somebody that has vacation and sick, and so when they're gone, taking their leave, then we have to make sure somebody's backfilling that position. It's not a position there, if somebody goes on vacation, in most cases in the city, you know, they're okay, we'll get by for the week that they're gone. Well, in dispatch, you have to have somebody sitting in the chair. We have to continue to provide that level of service. So when you add all that up, we figure just to keep the service as is, would cost the city additional $91,940 a year. And then what I've done is I've multiplied that over five years, just so the city council can have this picture, this is just not really a one-year decision, this is a decision that is going to be ongoing, because this is operational, we're talking about salaries and general fund contribution. So I want to make sure we understand that whatever the decision is, here's the five-year consequence. I mean, I could stretch it out to 10, 15, 20, I figure five years is enough to kind of paint the picture as to what's in front of us. Option number two would be to keep the service and what I would say fully fund it, which would be to hire four more full timers. Now because of that, we have wage set aside for part timers, that would help offset some of that cost. Our overtime should come down because of that, that would help offset some of that cost. But because of that, if we were to hire four new full timers, the additional cost to the city would be $157,468 annually. So over five years, 78,730.
Scott, are you able to show this up on the screen, so anyone in the back can see the numbers?
We got, you know what?
You can take, I mean, I can share with the judge if you want to.
It'll take me a minute, if we're okay.
Do you guys in the back want to, yeah, then that would be helpful for them to be able to see the numbers.
Okay, let's try that. Working just a second ago.
Okay, there we are.
There we go.
Can you, okay, make sure you can see that back there.
Okay, so let me circle back just briefly, since not everybody's been able to follow along. With, option number one is what I call the Band-Aid approach, which would be hiring one full timer and then backfilling everything else with part-time, but would also take into consideration, I believe we built in a $3 an hour raise for each of the full timers and the part timers, to get our wages more to what market says. So we don't think we take on any additional overtime. There is a cost, a benefits cost, and now we're offering health insurance and retirement, so there is an additional cost to the city for that one person. And then we'd have some savings in part-time pay, meaning we would need to use part-time for this person now, it would be a full-time wage. For, to keep the service and to go fully funded, we would have the four full-time employees, cost of $280,000, that's just the base wage. In order to get the wages to market, there would be an increase there. We'd save some on overtime, I zeroed out overtime. Whether we would actually not have any overtime if we were fully staffed like that, probably not, but I just wanted to make sure that these numbers were reflective of what we were trying to do. The savings in part-time pay is a big number, because of course now everybody's full-time, and so that would offset the cost of the full-time employees. But for the year, annually, $157,468, so the cost savings over five years, or the cost increases over five years from what we're currently paying would be $787,340. So with just hiring one full timer over five years is $459,000, option number two, $787,000. To join Central Dispatch, we take a look at what our general fund contribution. So when you look at the dispatch budget, we do get some money from the state, we get 911 money, and there might be a couple of ancillary revenues there, but the majority of the funds come from the general fund in order to provide the service. That cost is $462,429, that was our budget number for this current fiscal year, on how much general fund money we would need to provide the service. What dispatch, or Central is telling us operationally, if we were to use, join them and pay them for the service, our cost would be $297,319 a year. So our annual savings on operations would be $165,110 each year, with an understanding, and I'll get a little more into this, is that some of the service that our dispatch provides is administrative in nature. So it's not just, it's just not 911 calls, it's just not necessarily calls on a cat in a tree or whatever, but sometimes there are some administrative calls that they handle for us. So with that, we might need a customer service person, if dispatch is no longer going to be in our building, we would need to hire another person, part-time, to help field some of those calls. So we put a cost in there of $20,000, which means our annual savings on operations would be $145,110 over five years, $725,550. So the thing that just kind of jumps out to me, depending on if we were to consider option one or two, if we consider option one, over five years, this is a cost difference of about $1.2 million to the city, a little less than $1.2 million. If we did the fully funded option, now we're in the territory of about $1.5 million over the five years. So seeing that number, that to me is saying, okay, we really need to take a hard look at this and see if this is something that we really want to consider. So as we talked with Central Dispatch, one of the things that came up is that they have a buy-in cost. And what the buy-in cost is, is they have an infrastructure already in place, and as we would join them, then they're requiring us to buy into some of the infrastructure they've already paid for. Now they'll give us credit for certain things, they'll give us credit for some of our equipment, they'll give us credit for the consoles, computers, some of the software, the radios that we have. And I'm going to get into that in just a minute in this other document. But one thing, as we look at the numbers, if we do, I mean, we're still under negotiation on this, our intent is to get that number to zero, so that we have a zero buy-in cost. And they've sent a proposal just a little bit earlier today that I'll go over with you, and we'll talk about whether that kind of gets us there or not. But if there is any sort of capital cost left within the fund balance of, so dispatch has its own fund, and within the fund balance, there's about $150,000. So that's, I want to make sure it's clear, that's one-time money, it's not operational, it's not something we can put towards salaries. It is something we could put towards equipment or a one-time cost, and so that's, that is there. If that needs to help offset our buy-in cost, then we have that money available. So those are the three options that we came up with financially. So when you look at the FAQ number one, and when I talk about the financial aspects of it, this is the document that we will be referring to. Let's talk about the employees. So as we talked with Central, it was paramount to us that our employees would have an opportunity to move over into their organization. The last thing we wanted to do is make a decision and employees have no option for employment. So we have talked with Central. Central, by taking on, if they take on our service, they have to hire new dispatchers now. And they're already short a few dispatchers. In essence, they're begging for people, which is good for our employees. That means if, there's a home for them at Central, if they want that to be their home. Now some might choose to work at other entities, there are other options in Utah County, other dispatch agencies. Some might want to leave dispatching and do something else, I mean, really, that's going to be up to the individual. We felt it was our responsibility to make sure that there was an option for them for an employment, no matter the situation. So Mike and Noreen have come and met with our dispatchers, most of them, I think there were some that couldn't attend, they came two separate days, to talk about what employment at Central would look like, and in essence, what Central could offer them, to see if that was something that they would want to consider. Again, because Central's, and our people, the dispatchers are trained, and that's gold to Central, that's gold to any dispatch agency. Because right now, if they're not trained and you're hiring somebody off the street, you've got to get them trained, and there's a cost to that and a time to that. And so Central's looking at our part timers that are trained, our full timers that are trained, and saying, you know, they're desirable to us. So let me go through, back to the February 4th, 2020, letter of intent. The letter of intent addresses what's in front for the employees. So if you go to page two and three, this gets pretty granular, and I don't want to, I don't think we necessarily need to go in detail on all that. But they'll take into account the years of service that our employees have, their seniority, they've indicated a sign-on bonus, so if we have an employee come over, it sounds like there's a sign-on bonus up front, just for making that move. And then also leave. So vacation and sick leave, they will front-load a certain amount of hours of leave to an employee that's moving from Pleasant Grove over to Central. So they have that outlined in here, as far as, and then how much leave they'll generate once they work there, and how many years tenure they have, when it comes to vacation and sick time. How many hours that they can carry over from year to year, that is all addressed as far as their caps. And then they even talk a little bit about part-time functionality. So they have a job share program, and I think talking with Mike, they're kind of looking at their part-time possibilities, again, to help them provide the service as well. So they're, so I think for the most part, if we have employees that even if they want to stay part-time, I think they can work something out with Central so that they will be employed. We do have dispatchers that are either full-time at another agency, or they have another full-time job, and this is supplementary income for them. And so those, we're hoping as well, could have that discussion with Central to see if there's a place there for them. They also list the benefits, which are very similar to what we provide as far as they're going to be in the Utah retirement system. They have a 401K option, health insurance, dental insurance, and you can see the list there. And so, in short, with the employees, there's an opportunity there. I think every employee that they talked to, when they looked at their years of service and what we were paying them, I think everybody was going to end up with a pay increase. Now some of them were probably a little bit more minimal than others. One of the things is that if we have employees that are working for us and they choose to work for Central, now they have a commute down to Spanish Fork. And so that's a change for them, as far as their lifestyle. So again, it's just not this perfect system where everything is going to be perfect all along the way. So we're doing our best to mitigate whatever the issues and hazards are, and I feel like we did a pretty good job of that, but it's just not like 100% all there. Now if our employees want to work for Central, we are just telling them, at this point, you need to negotiate your deal with Central. As a city, we just ask them to, in essence, take them, they are saying we will take them, but now the details of that employment are going to be between the employee and Central. We're not going to negotiate their starting wage or anything like that, that will be between the employee and Central. So any, I want to talk, maybe I'll just keep talking and then we'll do questions at the end here. So we go back to the buy-in cost, this is $354,000, $354,900. So if you go, these are page number, I think it's page seven, 3, 5, 7. It will show really the breakdown of the buy-in cost. So $354,900 is the buy-in cost. There are four assets that are things that they have assigned a value to, which is CIE, those are the radios, is that right? I'm not very technical, so Heidi or these guys might have to jump in if I'm getting something wrong. The phone equipment, the consoles, and the software licenses. So they're estimating what we have to a value of $189,900. So one of the, so that's what they're estimating our stuff is, and some of it, I think, are numbers that we've given them. And so that gets us most of the way there on this $354,900. And then we get to the use of our building. So this is one of the things that obviously, as we built a brand-new police station, we built space for our dispatch. When we designed this building three years ago, we did have a discussion with Central at the time, to see how much it would cost for us to join, as they gave us that number. It was pretty close to what we were already paying for the service out of our general fund. And so it was determined that, you know what, we'll keep the service. Since that time, we've hired a full-time dispatcher, which increased the general fund contribution. And then probably more importantly, is the state of Utah changed their distribution formula for the E911 money. So when you get a phone bill, there's a tax on there for 911, that goes to UCA, which is the Utah Communication Authority, and they are the ones that dole that money out based on the distribution formula. So they changed the formula two years ago, and our contribution, what we received for them, dropped $40,000. In order for us to keep the service at that time, the decision was, is we will just put more of our general fund money into it. So we subsidized another $40,000. So we, we subsidized another $40,000 in for the, for that service. And there's a larger political picture at play. And, and I'll talk about that in general terms because, because it's the state legislature, I don't, there's, might be the intentions of some in the legislature, but not all. There are some that would like to see each county have one PSAP. Or maybe two at the most. And what, what has happened is they've looked at the smaller PSAPs, which Pleasant Grove being one of them. PSAP is our license to dispatch. And so they're looking at our, at some of these things for these, so the distribution formula didn't do us any favors. If you were a little bit of a smaller city, you ended up paying more money. If you were a larger city or a larger entity in a lot of ways, and I, I think Central might have came out losing on that a little bit too, but, you know. But some entities came out better. I think Provo and maybe Orem came out a little better. We were definitely one that lost on that. So the legislature, I mean, there's a couple legislators that have run legislation each year trying to get to this point of one PSAP per county. They don't get much traction with the greater body, so it feels like what they're doing now is they're chipping away and, and making things a little bit tougher for each entity. So there's, I'm going to talk about some potential legislation. This is not a bill, but this is information that's being passed around amongst the PSAPs that the transfer rates have become an issue for some legislators. Meaning, when a 911 call comes in and it's not actually our entity, so we get a 911 call and it's an emergency in Orem, we, we transfer that call to Orem Dispatch. And then Orem takes it from there. So there's a, there's a time to that. Now, it's usually pretty quick. I mean, we don't dwell on that one. They give us an address. We figure out it's an Orem, we shoot that over as soon as possible. What the state is concerned about is the more you have of those, the more chance that you could have an error, a dropped call or something that could cause a major issue because generally, it's going to be an emergency situation. And so they've looked at, at this, and if you look at what they're proposing is that, and there's two different transfer rates. There's a 2% and a 5%, and I've just kind of used the 5%. But they want every entity to be down to 5% or less on their transfer rates. Well, Pleasant Grove has the second highest transfer rate in the state at 24%. And so they're giving us a window of one, two, or three years. Again, keep in mind, this is discussed legislation. It's not a bill, but I just want to paint a picture of kind of what we're battling with, with legislative issues. That with this 24%, that they're saying, you've got to be down to five. You've got, you know, three years to get there. And if you're not down to five after three years, we're going to withhold funds from you. So whether there's the, kind of the operating money they send you, and they also have a grant program. So they take some of the C-911 money and they have a grant program that we've applied and gotten funds. That's generally how we've gotten new consoles, new equipment. We've used those grant funds. And they're saying, they'll cut the grant funds off if you can't beat the transfer rates. Because I'm asking Heidi, I mean, can we really control when we receive a phone call? I mean, some of it depends on what cell tower it's bouncing off of when it comes to us. And so if we can't control that, how are we supposed to get down to 5% when we don't really control the number of calls that are coming into our agency? So just on a general look at something like that, it just doesn't seem very favorable to a small PSAP that we're going to be able to, and I, and I don't know what the fix is. I don't know if it's, there's something we would have to invest more money or if it's like, man, we're just out of luck because we don't, we, we can't really control where the call's coming from. And if you're driving on I-15, depending on where you are, that call could start in American Fork and you could be down in Orem by the time you're done with that call. So, you know, American Fork, Pleasant Grove, Linden, Orem. I mean, you've just drove through four communities right there on I-15. So that's, that's just trying to paint a picture of some of the legislative things that we have in front of us. So as we've looked at the building and having this understanding that when we made this decision to build this space at the time, the financials didn't make sense for us to make the change. The financials make more sense for us to consider this change because of the situations that I've, I've just described. So we've turned to Central and said, hey, you know, we have this brand-new building. We will eventually need that space just for our PD. We don't need it today. And so we have asked them, do you have a use for the space? And they have said, yes, we do. We, we could use a kind of a backup emergency operation. And that would be our intent for use of the space. And so then we talked about a lease payment for that. And in their latest proposal, they would lease it for us, from us, for $30 a square foot, which would be $18,000 a year. So the, so if you've been up there in our dispatch center, we have offices, we have a couple offices, we have kind of a kitchenette, kind of break area, we have a quiet room. We're going to continue to use that space. What Central would use would be where the consoles are. And so we estimate that to be at about 600 square feet. So the value, how much, the question that in my mind was, well, how much did we spend on 600 square feet of space? Well, we're going to go over the public safety building numbers, but a little bit of a spoiler, we spent $283 a square foot. So you times $283 a square foot times 600 square feet, that's, you know, roughly, it's just under $170,000.
So Scott, let me make sure I heard you right. So Central will use the dispatch pods, say, pods. But the offices or the break room?
We're going to, so for instance, we just hired a part-time victim advocate.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have an office for them. So we would put them in one of those offices there.
Okay.
So there's, I mean, like I said, in, in a few years' time, and I don't know when that is, I don't know if that's five years or 10 years, eventually, we're going to need that space. And so as we've been talking with Central, we're saying, let's look at a five-year window. You give us credit for five years worth of lease upfront towards our buy-in cost. That space is for, for your use for those five years. And you use them in whatever capacity you want to use it. If you're in there 10 times a week, great. If you're in there 10 times a month, great. If you're in there two times a month, that's going to be up to you. You're leasing the space, it's going to be at your discretion how much you're going to use that space. What the payment is to us will not change on how much they're using it. So the, the value of that lease is $90,000. And so what we have now is a $75,000 left on the buy-in cost that we, at this point, what Central is telling us and what their latest proposal has said, is we will defray that cost for five years. So we won't charge you that for five more years. And at the end of five years, if we need to continue to use your space and you don't need it, then we can continue on a lease for the space. Or we have these radios, we have four of them, that they are taking from us. That's part of the equipment that they're going to buy. And these radios are kind of old and they're going to be switched out. And when they're switched out, there's a value to these radios. So right now, the value of the radio is like $3,000, $4,000, $5,000. But UCA is going to pay for the new radios. So if you have four radios today, you get four new ones. And so if they have four radios today, even though our radios are old, we get a little bit of a contribution for the value of that. When UCA switches those out, they're going to get, I don't know what the cost of the radio is. We don't really know the cost, but let's say it's $20,000 for the radio. They just gained this value, this large value because they have our radios. And so we know that there's a value there that was going to benefit them. We just don't know what that is. And so what they're proposing is that the, when that switchover happens, we take a look at what that value is and then we turn around and credit that towards your buy-in cost. Will that get us over the $75,000 hump? We don't know. We'll know that better. But it would be a, you know, a reduction in that $75,000. And then there's also the use of the building. So again, I don't know in five years if we're going to need it. Or, or they might not need it either. They might say, you know what, we, we don't have a need for the space anymore, so, I mean, we're going to cancel it on our end. But there will be, so there could be some leftover. The most it's going to be is 75. We anticipate that to be somewhat less, but we won't know that for another five years. So what I'd propose is we take $75,000 of our fund balance and kind of, I don't know, hold it in escrow is the term, but we just hold it aside till that window's over, so that if we have to use the full 75, we have the money in place and we don't have to go back and find the money. So I don't know if, I hope that all makes sense as we're doing that. And that's kind of, that was our discussions as of this morning and what they put in paper as of, you know, just a couple hours ago. So that's where we're at. Now, today, we are not deciding exactly that. That's just what's on the table. If the council gives the go-ahead to enter into, to, you know, do the negotiation process and finalize the numbers, we will make sure that that gets finalized in a manner that if the council has some direction, they would like us to go other than this, then we can consider that. So, so that's, now, our, our building's going to be used. We're going to be compensated for the use of our building. When I take a look at that $170,000 that we've spent on that 600 square feet, and, and if we're going to get 50 years out of our building, that's $3,400 a year that we would need to get back to make up for our capital cost of that space. So if they're going to, if they're going to pay us $18,000 a year, we're going to come out ahead on that. Now, they're not going to fully compensate it for, for the full 170, but probably the longest they're going to be in here is 10 years. And then we're going to get 40 years of use out of that space. So it's, we don't need them to fully pay for the space, but, I mean, they're going to make a nice step towards accounting for our initial cost of that. So that is where we are on the buy-in cost. I do want to address the level of service and response times because this is something that has come up and has been asked. If we were to use Central as our service, does that affect anything as far as response times to our community? So in a 911 situation, the emergency call comes in, the dispatchers have a pro call of questions they ask, and it takes them about a minute to get to those questions and find out the nature of the emergency, the address, and whatever they need to know so that they can now dispatch police or fire and get them to the scene. So when we look at how long it takes us, it takes us about a minute, minute, eight seconds, I think, is our average, is what Heidi told me. And Central, I think Mike said, 94% of their calls are handled within one minute. So ours is an average, theirs is more of a, we have everything figured out within one minute, 94% of our calls within one minute. And I think you said a minute and a half was 99%?
Uh, 97.98.
97.98. So the impact to our residents when it comes to dialing 911, really, the major change is the individuals can be sitting in Spanish Fork instead of in Pleasant Grove. The protocols, the questions that are asked, the getting people, because once a phone call comes to us, to our police and fire, our response times are that point, they're our responsibility. It's how quickly we can get there. So we don't anticipate any change in regards to the level of service on an emergency call. So one thing that will change is, like I said, I was talking about, is more the emergency services or the non-emergency calls. You know, with an understanding that not everything's 911. So a cat gets stuck in a tree, somebody's going to call, they're going to want the fire department to come help them, get the cat out of the tree. That's unlikely to be a 911 call, but it would be, still be a call that would go to Central and they would dispatch our fire department to the scene to take care of the issue. So we have those types of calls. And then we have what I call just kind of the straight-up administrative or almost more secretarial in nature. When, you know, it's 2:00 on a Thursday and somebody needs to talk to the chief of police and they call our standard number, our dispatch would pick that up, say, hey, I need to meet with the chief, I need to set an appointment. Dispatch would handle that. So those are the type of calls we're going to handle now with our part-time administrative assistant and other staff. We'll also set up a calling tree, so when you dial our number, it will say first thing, if this is an emergency, hang up and dial 911. If not, and you need to leave a voicemail for the chief, press 1. For captain, press 2. If you need to, you know, set up a time of fingerprints, press 3. And so we do that on the admin side and that just helps with our time of answering phone calls that generally, people can get where they need to go without somebody taking the time of picking up the phone and saying, okay, you, I need to direct you there. So that's one of the things that we've talked about to do that. So I've talked about level of service and response time change. I've talked about administrative calls to the police department. I've talked about past and future legislation. Number five was, will the employees have jobs? And then number six was, you know, why did the city build the building and then not have dispatch services anymore? So I've talked about that. So I think I've covered at least everything that's come to my mind or our minds as we've talked through these issues. I do want to, I, I want to say a couple things. I want the chiefs to be able to make a few comments and then we'll turn it back to you for any questions that you might have. So with the understanding that this is affecting the lives of individuals, as we have gone through this process, it's become pretty clear to me that in the city's long-term best interests, it would be to, to join Central Dispatch and to be a part of that. So as the city administrator and through what we've talked about, that would be my recommendation for the council to consider doing that. If the council wants to consider that option, then like I said, just give me the direction that we can now kind of enter into a negotiated deal with them. With that, I'll let the chiefs kind of give their thoughts on a potential move to dispatch and kind of where they are, as they've been involved with pretty much everything we've gone through in this process. So they've been mulling this over for two months and I'll let them share their thoughts. So Mike, if you want to start.
Chief Roberts.
Mayor and Council, in going through this process, it's become known that, we, we've been watching the legislation for quite some time and I think that that's inevitable down the road. And given the fact that we can't fully fund dispatch to where it needs to be, I believe that the consolidation is the proper thing to do for our dispatch center. Questions?
So as the more labor-intensive part of dispatch, when, when we go out on a call, then dispatch literally needs to babysit us. They need to know what we're going, what we're doing and, and what we need. And, and so there's a lot more back and forth with dispatch through the fire department, say, at a working fire, where we discuss things back and forth with dispatch a lot. And, and so it becomes very labor-intensive. So we have enjoyed and we have enjoyed the professionalism of the dispatch center that we've had. They've just really done a tremendous job and stuff. There are some advantages to going with Central that will be of great value to us. And some, some of those things can be time-saving and time is often lives. And so this is an economical thing for the, for the city, but it also is a positive thing for the fire department too, because we will, we will gain some advantages over some of the services. And so we're supportive of the move. We feel bad that we're going to lose people. We're pleased that Central is willing to take those people because, you know, they're friends and they're good valuable employees and their proficient, their professionalism will work just as well, if not even better, with Central. And so we're supportive of the move.
So we have Central here, we have the chiefs and myself. We've thrown a lot of information at you. Is there any questions off the top of your head that you would like for us to address?
Counsel? Sit. Okay.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate Central being here and our dispatchers, Heidi and the, and Captain. Lots to review.
Yeah.
I think, I think we just need to kind of take some time and, and look into that. I think, from my point of view, I think we need to begin negotiations and at least say, see where that falls if this, if, if truly there is that much savings. And that can only be done when you, when you do a negotiation. So that would be my recommendation, Mayor.
Okay. So how's the other rest of the council? Should we move forward with this? Have them bring a, an item to us and...
Eric, you.
So Scott, I'm just trying, I'm going through the numbers for, for a solid review. Number two, the 157, 468, that's the cost that would cost us per year if we were to go.
Four full-timers.
Yep.
Four, 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 four new full-timers.
Yep. Okay.
And, and, I mean, Central is a large agency and they're having trouble getting full-time dispatchers. Orem is a larger agency than us, and they're paying, both Central and Orem are paying more than us, and they are struggling to get full-timers. So, I mean, fortunately, we have four f- full-timers that are very solid. I mean, they're loyal to the city. They've done us a great job. But attracting more, it, I mean, it's not impossible, but it's just this understanding that, and again, it's probably more of a function of the economy, but that's, that is a challenge of continuing to attract people to this profession at this moment in time.
Maybe this is for the chiefs. What, uh, what will you, what will they be noticing different by going to Central? Maybe, maybe it's a question for Mike. I don't know. Will they, will you notice something different? Are there things that we do as a service, added service, that our, our officers will have to now do or?
Yeah, the, the personal touch, obviously, you will notice. I mean, we know, we know the person that's on the other side of the, the radio, and the person that's on the radio knows us, so there may be some, as far as people working down there that we don't really have a personal relationship with, but as far as the service, I don't see any difference.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Um, and I, uh, this is very, very difficult. I have made, uh, I've made some calls to dispatch and I love, I've loved listening to, uh, I've loved talking to friends and family. I did, uh, reach out to some of those 21 entities, and, uh, there is not one dissatisfied customer. So, um, I did ask, um, and I can't remember, um, who said it, but, uh, it was, somebody's not gonna call in an emergency and a dispatch at Central is gonna pick it up and say, oh, wait, you're in Pleasant Grove, just a second. Um, so I've also-
Right, Central, is that?
Is that how it works?
Is that right, Central? Is that?
Can we make sure that's in the contract?
For the record, that was three nods.
Okay. Um, anyway, I, um, it's like been a perfect storm of bad events for our little Pleasant Grove dispatch. Anyway, I say go ahead and move, move along with the, the negotiations.
Yeah, and we're not, and we're, and just so that, and we're not saying-
No.
-move. We're saying enter into a negotiation.
Take the next.
So, take the next step and, yeah, let's, let's look at what these numbers, these are-
Oh, that's all we're asking for you today is-
Yeah, these are just, these are just preliminary. Um, and we wanna make sure that they'll stick.
They're not gonna change very much, though.
So, right.
Okay. Brad?
When this was first discussed, uh, some time ago, right after I was elected, I, I voiced a concern that, first of all, we need to protect the employees, whatever we do. As we had discussions with the various council, they felt the same way. I look at this and see this, other than the fact that they, uh, will have to travel to Spanish Fork, um, this is a win-win for those folks. And, uh, I, I know some of them may not feel that way now, but if they go down there and give it a month or so, I think they'll feel fine about it. I'm in favor of this and ask you to continue negotiating.
Thank you. Sid?
Yeah, I'd like to continue into negotiations. This is a lot of good information, both from Central and you, Scott, with the FAQ and then hearing from the chiefs and their recommendations. And it's a lot to, to think about and go over the numbers to make sure we're doing what's right for the community, the dispatchers, the taxpayers of Pleasant Grove, and making sure that we're continuing to bright, provide a quality service for them. And also do what we can to help our current employees who've given that service over the years. So I, I would like to continue to go down the road to see where we, where we can end up with this.
Thank you.
Scott, I would like to, like to say thanks for, I mean, this is for, for how this was put together as far as, uh, the packages for the employees.
Yeah.
I know that's been the top of your mind-
Oh, yes.
-from, um, from pay raises to compensation, to signing bonuses, to, to leave, to benefits. Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, unfortunately, life happens. But, um, for, for you to take the step and, and ensuring these, these employees are taken care of is, takes, is, goes a long ways. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I want you to understand the timing moving forward.
If you can go over here.
We're trying to, we're trying to find this fine balance of moving as quickly as we can without, uh, missing something. And the reason we wanna move quickly is we do have people in limbo. And the longer that we delay actually making the decision yes or no on this, it just means these people are, are in limbo. That's why I was pushing poor Mike. He's already, my name pops up on his caller ID, I think he gets cold sweats, because, I mean, I've been talking to him Thursday, Friday, um, this morning, uh, maybe Monday. I think I probably called him yesterday too, uh, just to make sure that we're communicating and we're understanding, because I wanted to make sure we had this discussion today. If we didn't have this today, then it's not until May 8th, or February 18th before we have this discussion. Uh, you meet two times a month. Their board meets one time a month. And so we're finding this balance of making sure we can get everything situated as quickly as possible without, uh, making a bad decision. So just so you know, we're, we're, we're gonna move in haste. If, if, I just wanna make sure that you're aware that this isn't something we're just gonna sit on, we're gonna keep going.
Well, I just wanna say thank you to Central. I mean, they don't have to do any of this. They don't have to take us on, they don't have to offer, you know, work with us and partner with us. I mean, so I appreciate that they're looking out for the best, best interests of our employees. They're trying to do what's right for the community and the county, and I just, I, not the county, I'm sorry, Central. Um, I, I feel like they've made this a priority and they're doing everything they can to be a partner and not just, um, you know, they, they don't have to offer these things as well. And so I, it shows to me that if this does go through and happen, that we're turning over our dispatch into good hands and possibly even better because of what they're being able to offer with a wage increase and, um, more opportunities. And so I really, really appreciate the partnership if, if this goes forward.
I, I do have a question now. Uh, so we get a, we get a chair on the board?
Yeah, we'd have a seat on the board.
And is that designated to a specific staff member or?
Uh, in some cities, it's their city manager, others, it is, uh, police. There, there's a technical board, and then there's kind of the administrative board.
Okay.
The administrative board tends to be the city manager, um, or a council member. The, uh, technical board tends to be a police or fire or somebody of that nature.
And that's a straightforward vote? You're, you-
We're one vote, yeah.
We're one vote? Okay. Equal parts?
Okay.
Actually, I have one more question.
Yeah.
So the city manager, I forgot your name, sorry.
This is Seth Atkinson from E5.
Well, I'm sorry.
From Seth.
Seth, from E5.
So Seth, how long is your term?
As a chairman?
Uh-huh.
To your-
It doesn't end soon enough for him.
Okay. Yeah, he was, he was looking. So, and, and that rotates across the 21 different entities?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, I guess, if this happens.
Potentially twenty-two, yep.
Right? Um, so at some point, Scott or a city administrator from Pleasant Grove would, would, could-
Be chair-elect.
Be chair. Is that, is that a rotating, is that an elected position?
That was just decided by the board.
Okay.
Just a word of warning, I missed one meeting.
And that was the one?
Wow. Wow.
Scott, yeah, give those, that calendar.
Wow. Pleasant Grove acts like that a lot as well, so, okay. Well, that's good. So it's, yeah, but it's, but it's not, but it's, is it a vote or is it a rotating through the different entities?
It's a vote.
It's a vote, okay. All right. Great, thank you.
And, uh, things that are voted on are same as any board, that you got your budget, you have your-
I have a budget that the board will approve. I mean, really, they're the city council of, of, of the Central Dispatch.
Okay.